Thanks, Trace. Uh, good morning. I'd like to follow the regularly scheduled Board of Select meeting for Monday, March 4th, 2024 order. Our first order of business is Pledge of Allegiance. Charles, we do this.
Let the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, title to our agenda is public hearing. We receive public comment on the ordinance is to establish an affordable housing commission and affordable housing trust fund. Uh, I think you probably have a group of informed individuals here relative to the goals and the rationale. Um, as I think most of you are aware, there's a statewide shortage on housing. But even more importantly, there's a significant need for affordable housing throughout the state, and Guilford is no exception. Uh, we have, uh, we have a couple of projects that are affordable housing base that have been approved that are in the works. Uh, but we are nowhere near, uh, the state, uh, so the state threshold that they're looking for communities to get to, which would be 10% of all housing stock is affordable. And affordable is defined, at least in the state statutes, as deed restricted. There are certainly, uh, some developments here in town, a couple of community units that would, uh, clearly, uh, satisfy the, the income thresholds or the pricing thresholds. But because they're not deed restricted, we not get the advantage of adding those to our numbers. So I want to thank a, uh, a group of, uh, three very committed and passionate individuals who've been working with an ad hoc, uh, affordable housing group, uh, committee. What's the real name of it?
Well, I think it's going to be retired now, hopefully today, but it was the Economic Development, uh, Economic Development Plan Committee, but it was formed to, uh, increase the amount of affordable housing in Guilford. We do have some, but as Matt just said, we need.
And that, that group has been working, uh, in a couple of ways. One is to help inform and to drive the discordance, this affordable housing trust fund, also to, uh, help inform the affordable housing, uh, plan that was required, uh, for every community in the state to file with the state. I believe that was in 2022. And, uh, they've also been, uh, engaged in a series of, uh, community conversations, uh, which is designed to spur awareness, uh, of the need and then also to get support, uh, throughout the community for, for affordable housing. So what, um, what we have, um, now let me take one more piece. A recent zoning, uh, recodification, uh, we included a, uh, a piece on affordable housing, uh, that is, uh, called inclusionary, which requires, uh, the inclusion of affordable housing units and, uh, how does housing development beyond, uh, single family homes, uh, more than, more than single family homes. That, uh, that made it, um, also, uh, it was contemplated that developers could.
Could you just talk louder?
Yeah, certain, certain. Uh, it was also, it was also contemplated that developers would, uh, would, uh, have a fee in lieu of, which means if they don't want to build the affordable housing units, they would pay a, uh, a rate, uh, or it to as a to be determined, uh, formula, uh, in lieu of actually building the affordable housing. Uh, that trust fund is intended to go towards helping other developers down the road, uh, make, make those projects more affordable for developers down. It'll take us some time, obviously, to build that up, but that, uh, fee in lieu of is not necessarily the only way that, uh, that, uh, trust fund could be funded. There could be budget allocations. It could, you know, if there was surplus one year, we could fund there. Uh, we could start to include it in the, uh, in the operating budget. But nonetheless, uh, there are, there, there's a significant focus and we've taken some steps to get Guilford, uh, to where we think needs to be, uh, not necessarily just to satisfy, uh, the state, but to satisfy the needs of our residents. Because, uh, we are a richer community when we have a wider breadth, uh, of folks on the socioeconomic spectrum in our community and making it affordable to live in Guilford is, uh, is, is, I think, a worthwhile effort. And I'm not, I've not heard, quite honestly, I've not heard anybody say, "We don't need it." So.
Right.
Sandy, Sandy chaired that committee for a long time. Any, uh, comments or?
Uh, no, uh, the committee came into being around, um, 2015 and, um, so we're, we're almost in our 10th year and, um, sometimes we seem to be, seems to be a very slow process, but honestly, um, I really do think that we will see some, uh, real fruits of our labor and, uh, over those 10 years, I think a lot of people in town, uh, that, when we first started the term affordable, we, we also identify that with workforce housing and, uh, it's, it's different from, um, low income housing, um, which is something that exists as well, but the focus of this committee is on affordable. So I think there's the, the education about the concept of, um, why we need it and what it is, is, uh, is at a much higher threshold than when we started in, in 2015.
Anybody else have any comments on the board before we open it up to the public? Anyone, uh, wish to make any comments on, uh, the affordable housing ordinance and the trust fund?
What does deed restricted mean?
Deed restricted means it has to be, it has to continue to qualify. It has to be, uh, priced at, uh, a, uh, level which is either 80, 60, or 40% of the area median income. So rents can't exceed a certain threshold and it is, it is deemed by deed to be an affordable housing unit, uh, traditionally for 40 years, as the state requirement.
How, how do you determine what the median income is?
That is done in an area, the area median income, which is the data that's put together by, uh, the state issues that on a basis. In the greater Haven region, it's about $110,000 per household.
I mean, but how do they determine?
Formula. Formula is the.
Based on?
Based on income, based on income, number, number of folks in a household. That $110,000 number, I believe, is for a family of four.
So then the affordable formula starts at 80% of 110, 60% of 110, 40% of 110, and down to even 20% of 110, depending on people's, uh, earnings. Because the, the other formula is, is that 30% of whatever your income is should, no more than that should go towards rent or mortgage, or else you're considered housing burdened. So, and the other part of the deed restricted is the town then, if it's a home, uh, then the town only, um, applies taxes to the, um, of the, uh, if the $500,000 house is purchased by someone who qualifies for 300,000, then they're only taxed on 300,000, not the 500,000. It's to try to keep some homes in the town affordable for, uh, the beginning teacher or beginning police person or someone starting their own farming business for someone who is working and has an income, but would like to own a home in Guilford.
So. Name and address for the record and you got to come up to the table, please, uh, those in a row, or just stand, stand and name an address for the record, please.
Carolyn Jagelski, and this is just a, a quick question because I'm, this is very new to me, but, um, I forgot it. When you're. See, I went through all that. Um. When you buy the house and you buy it at the 80%.
No, you don't buy it at the 80%. You buy it at whatever the market rate is.
Well, at the, oh, okay, but I can't turn around in two years and sell it for full market, right? It is protected by deed.
Correct.
That's where the deed comes in.
You're absolutely right.
Okay, that's all I wanted to.
Marsha Meyer, Long Hill Farm. So, um, I was, so, yeah, this article appeared in the newspaper, so I could thoroughly read it before I came. We had Larry Rizzolo and Christie come to First Church.
Larry's online here.
Oh, Larry's, um, hi Larry. Okay, I spoke to him last night. So this was good because I wasn't aware that we were in an ad hoc at this point. So if we go to a regular affordable housing committee.
Commission.
A mission, what did you say?
Go to a commission.
A commission, okay. Then how long will it take to really get things going?
It will take, it'll take weeks because this group has been meeting, uh.
It's just ongoing. It's just, we're really just formalizing the committee into a commission because the members of the committee and members of town government recognized about a year ago or maybe a year and a half ago, that this was an important component of our town's goals and that it needed to be a little bit stronger than an ad hoc committee.
Okay. So the commission then would have what kind of power or?
Really, I, to kind of continue to do the work that we are doing.
Which is to promote awareness, to promote, uh, to work with, to work with developers, that's, uh, potential developers, to, uh, inform, uh, planning and zoning, uh, as to uh, appropriate, uh, uh, changes to zoning code if needed, uh, to work, uh, with the Board of Selectmen in terms of, uh, some of those developments that would be moving forward.
And is there?
It's fully, it's fully outlined in the ordinance.
Yeah, I tried to read everything.
We have other commissions in town. We have the Police Commission, we have the Human Rights Commission, we have the Park and Rec Commission. So it's, it's an, it's.
Another commission.
Another commission and I'm, one of our speaking members of this group, uh, is, says very wisely that we just don't, um, create commissions willy nilly, you know?
Good.
This is only the second one in my experience.
And will there be, I know that there, um, on Hubbard Road, um, they were going to put up a huge development of one bedrooms. Are, are you thinking about the future of multiple bedrooms so that families could actually move in?
I'll let, I'll let Max.
Yes, we, we had attempted to get the developer of that project on Hubbard Road to consider mu- uh, multi-bedroom units there. Uh, it did not fit with their business model. Um, and what we are, were unable to do with that was because that was a, uh, it was under a 280G.
A 30G. It's a private development and they have the, they, they are, they're meeting the requirements of a private development. We were, 30% of the units are going to be affordable. We all, I think all of us in this room who have been associated with the Affordable Housing Committee or slash about the commission would be much happier if it were two or three bedrooms, but we can't make the person do that. We can suggest.
The, the 830G statute gives the developer the right to, um, avoid some of the requirements that planning and zoning would put in place for a project that, that size.
Where should I stand?
There you go. Where do we go?
My name is Karen Gargamel McCray. I'm a Catholic worker, so my husband works with the Amistad Catholic Worker. He's been in the housing crisis there, uh, but I'm also a legal aid attorney. I work with the VA in West Haven with homeless veterans. And so, and there's many other reasons why I'm in this room, but I first want to express my gratitude. 10 years.
A blessing.
Yeah, it's a steady.
It's not just me, this may.
All of you. For sure, but, uh, I think it should be acknowledged that 10 years is not a, a small commitment or a light commitment and I'm very moved by that commitment and grateful. I cannot tell you how much I support this initiative and how proud I am as a Guilford resident to hear all that's being done. As a legal aid attorney, as a housing attorney, I would be happy to in any way join a commission, lend the support of the VA and legal aid, uh, to this effort. If there's any testimony I could give from my clients, I myself worked with a veteran who lived in Guilford his whole life and now is in affordable housing in West Haven. And I helped him get on the waiting list for Guilford because he remembers the bike shop, uh, that was on Route One, he worked there as a. I talked about the love of the land, um, just Guilford's a very special place and people know that it's special and I think it's such a wonderful gift to give the gift of this community to other people. My husband and I bought the old Fisher's Nook, uh, and it was in total disrepair and we were lucky enough to buy it because of a lot of reasons nobody else wanted it. Uh, I don't know that we, as even as a lawyer working in legal aid could have afforded to live here if it wasn't for this very strange coincidence of putting the labor in, the sweat equity in ourselves. And so I feel very lucky and I want to make sure that people, um, like my kids are going to go to Guilford Public Schools, right? Like, my God, that's amazing. I went to Hopkins, my parents, my dad was a construction worker and my mom worked at Catholic schools. We didn't, they didn't have much money. I went on total scholarship and I, I know that Guilford is as good as Hopkins and I'm grateful to send my kids.
Which is $45,000 a year.
Exactly. Anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
MJ.
Hi, I'm Mary Jo Kestner, 131 Boston Street, and I just wanted to say that as I was the co-chair of the Plan of Conservation and Development Commission, that also was 2015 and we had a member of, actually a public attendee at all of those meetings. When, I just want to take a minute to remember Betty Augustine, who was a tireless advocate for housing before this, the Housing Partnership, Guilford Interfaith Housing. There it's always been, as far, I've been here 23 years. We've been looking, working at this a long time, um, but there has been a lot of progress made. There was stuff in the P O C D, now we have a housing plan. Uh, this committee, the housing group that Sandy chairs was formed just for some pre-development grants to try to get a project started. And through that, I think we've learned and what everybody has heard is that it's really hard to do affordable housing and we need a full-time group dedicated to this. And so we're so excited to be at that point where we have the foundation to do that and we feel to be successful.
MJ, thank you.
A little P S, I just wanted to add that I was the lone chair for, um, eight years and last year Christie Rubin Duns, who's been a member of the committee, um, a month of, longer than I have, by one month, she's now co-chair of the committee with us. She's just arrived.
John Crawford, 70 Indian Road, Guilford. I guess I wanted to follow up on some things that a couple of people said. Sandy made the point that it's been 10 years, kind of MJ kind of issued that same few. That's really a long time working on this. And I wanted to encourage the commission to perhaps work with people in the private sector a little bit more, 501(c)(3) organizations, you know, a long, long time ago, there was a Guilford Interfaith Housing Corporation back in the 80s and early 90s. And it actually acquired 12 units and, and maintained them and eventually turned them over to the organization that did the, the development up on Apple. I think that could be done again and it can be done much faster. I mean, I was part of that and in three years we acquired those, those three units and I think we can do that again. And there are people in town who I'm sure would be willing to cooperate and contribute to that 501(c)(3) to make that happen. So perhaps it would speed up some of this and what you're doing is wonderful and I support all that, but as you said, we need more of this kind of thing. So perhaps some thought about working more closely with 501(c)(3)'s or encouraging them or bringing back Guilford Interfaith Housing, which I think may still exist someplace. Yeah. So that's all I wanted to say is to encourage that possibility because I think that can happen much faster than this process.
Great, John, thank you for those comments. We had, we had identified, uh, a couple of areas where we, uh, the Guilford Housing Authority is an organization that, uh, we need to engage in the interfaith volunteers, I think is a great suggestion. Thank you. And thanks for the work you did on that stuff years ago. And there may be a spot on the commission. Although I, 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 I think there, uh, spots are going to be, uh, in demand. Already, already had some folks reach out. Anyone else, uh, comment or question?
Mary Lee Duff, I live on Faulkner Drive in Tobbles Point. I'm just, uh, well, two things. One is I read the long article and I'm so impressed with all the legal and all the, everything you've done, but then I felt like, but where are the builders? You know, where is this happening? And you just want, you know, people to be out there working. But also I'm confused. You mentioned the $500,000 house for $300,000 and I didn't really realize we were talking about $500,000 houses.
I don't think we are.
But, okay, but, okay, so let's use it as an example. I don't understand, um, the builder comes in and builds a house that's worth $500,000.
Now, that's not, and I apologize if we weren't clear. The houses are built at the rate, the affordability is the determining factor. But I'll give you an example, the, um, Great Hill cottages on State Street. Has anybody been up to see those, uh, lately? Chris Widmer did. Those are all, you know, what, 13, 1500 square foot and they're all priced in the mid $200,000 range.
Three.
Three, whatever. And by definition, by the state set, the definition, the cost to own a home, uh, against your income is what determines the, uh, the affordable factor. So the houses are built and they are sold for, uh, not market rates, but discounted rates because the developers are securing outside financing from, uh, the, the Connecticut Department of Housing, the Federal Department of Housing, low interest loans from the, you know, the Community for Partner, Partnership for Communities, uh, to Hartford, there's a variety of these organizations that provide funding so that the cost, uh, the purchase cost is not really market rate, it is a subsidized rate. And that's what we're talking about. What Sandy was talking about was if you are, um, if, if you are in an affordable unit and your income is such that it, uh, your housing costs exceed 30% of your, uh, income, then you are entitled to a tax abatement on the value of your property.
Okay, so the incentive is there for the builders?
Exactly.
Okay.
And who provided the land on that particular parcel? Chris purchased that land. Okay. That was purchased and then they split off the house to the right, which is being rehabilitated and it looks absolutely spectacular right now. But, uh, he bought that parcel knowing he would be able to fund the affordable units because he was, uh, again, a market rate price for the house that he subbed it by. And just to, might as well, uh, we've got a couple of other projects going on. Someone mentioned the Hubbard Road property, uh, but also, uh, the Woodruff property, uh, with Neighbor Works New Horizons is a piece of property. It's over by the, uh, Whiffle House, between Whiffle House and, and Public Works. The town, uh, gave the developer, the chosen, the preferred developer, which went through an RFP process, we donated the land, uh, and, uh, that is an in-kind contribution, which when you start to combine it with the other funding vehicles that Neighbor Works New Horizons has access to, that's what will allow those to be affordable. Those are all going to be rental, um, so, uh, the, and, but, and they're also, they works New Horizons will be paying tax on those units as well.
Neighbor Works New Horizons is a not-for-profit developer. They developed the Apple Tree, uh, properties in, in the 90s. And then they also, um, manage about 20 standalone, um, residences around the town. So they're a known entity to Guilford. And it was a competitive process. We had other, uh, developers interested that we ended up selecting.
Called Neighborhood, what?
Neighborhoods New Horizons. They're based in New Haven.
There was a clarification to the text that was in the newspaper about the role of the town planner. Are you, are you going to talk about that?
Oh, the town planner will not be a voting member.
Yes.
That's the, that's the text change, that's it.
Yeah. I just wanted.
Thank you.
I know who's going to say that here.
Anybody else with, uh, comments? All right, guys. Zach, Gwen? Hi Gwen. Uh, you're muted Gwen. We can't hear you. Praise the decade.
Yes. Go ahead Gwen, we couldn't hear you.
You're muted.
We still can't hear you Gwen.
Got it. Yes, I worked with Betty Augustine many years ago on the Apple Tree project and other things and, uh, my address is 395 Nut Plains Road. And, um, I wondered if you'd considered tiny houses at all? They're very attractive. I listened to a program where they said they would come and give talks and discuss them. They would also work as, uh, rental units because, within our rules of, uh, square footage. I wonder if that's been considered at all?
I think it's been a topic of conversation. I think one of the challenges there will be what do we do with zoning, existing zoning? And I think there's a, with the willingness that I see here and, uh, from what, uh, from my interpretation of where most of the planning and zoning members are, uh, that shouldn't be a heavy lift if, uh, if, if we decide to move in that direction with the right properties. I, I just want to follow up also on something, uh, somebody said about working with developers. There were at least five, four, or five of us who attended a South Central Regional Council of Governments, um, briefing last, uh, Wednesday or Thursday, whatever day it was, they all run together, um, where we had presentations and discussions with four developers, um, who do affordable housing. I think three of them or, or all four of them were for-profit developers who are focused, who have a focus on, um, affordable housing. They do, obviously it's mixed, it's mixed, uh, you know, market rate plus affordable, but some of the, some of the, um, facilities that we saw represented were, were beautiful. And, and, and they were, and they're in places like Avon and where, where were they? Wallingford, so they're all over the place. Clearly, one of the challenges that we have here for multi-unit affordable, uh, housing development is a lack of sewers. Uh, and that, that density becomes a challenge for us, but it, in that same zoning rewrite, we added a density bonus for affordable housing. So we're slowly trying to get at it from a bunch of different sides. Larry, did you have your hand up? You did Larry.
Yes, I, yes, I did. And, um, I apologize for some background noise. I was in a very quiet place to start and it's getting, uh, a little bit noisier. Now that I'm speaking, it's become silent here. I wanted to speak from the perspective of the Planning and Zoning Commission. If you look at Stanford's, uh, uh, Affordable Housing Regulations, they're very thorough and complete, but I note that, uh, it was an iterative process over 20 years to get where they are, um, uh, as they got more and more experience with, with the, uh, their situation. Our situation is quite different. We can't copy their regulations, but the point I'm making is that the Affordable Housing Commission, uh, would be invaluable, just as the, uh, committee has been invaluable in helping craft those regulations. They are going to need, uh, uh, constant update as we get more and more, uh, experience. So just as we, uh, rely on, and when Water, Lands Commission, uh, other commissions, uh, in making our, our policies and decisions, uh, the Affordable Housing Commission will also be invaluable to the committee. And I would emphasize, uh, that the new zoning regulations, uh, have some minimum requirements for private developers, but also incentives, as Matt just mentioned, uh, to, uh, have even more affordable housing in their projects. Uh, oh, Larry Rizzolo, uh, 24 Long Hill Farm.
Thank you Larry. Anyone else, uh? On Zoom, I don't see anybody else up there. Christie.
Yes, I didn't want to take anybody's time. I apologize. I went Christie Rubin Duns, 221 Fitchell Road and was late because I went to the wrong building, so, um. I've been on the committee since its inception and, uh, I'm really proud of the work that the committee has done and the leadership, uh, that the town planner in the past has, and especially Sandy, um, who's been there almost from the beginning, um, five minutes late. So, uh, and, and all of the people who've contributed over the years and, and, um, I think this commission is kind of a natural first step for, uh, next step for us to take, um, to help us be, um, you know, really a tool that the town can rely on, that we provide a resource for, um, the community to connect with, uh, on an ongoing basis. And then, and then affordable, affordable housing demand in Guilford, like everywhere is, um, I feel enormous. I don't think the statistics are so easily discernible, um, you know, because people keep asking kind of the same questions about what is affordable housing mean and how much does it cost and how do you figure it out? And that's what we hope this, uh, commission will be able to do in part is to continue a public dialogue, um, hear what you all have say and, um, you know, take that into consideration, not just, you know, when it hits the first page of the courier, um, or a development is going in somebody's backyard, um, but, but on an ongoing basis because it is a, our best hope to retain the character and charm and, um, values that we have in Guilford for, you know, a family-friendly, multi-generational, inclusive, uh, of, um, all of the people, uh, who have lived here and would like to stay here as well as new people coming in is planning. And, uh, that's an enormous task that is more than just creating zones. It's really having a vision. It's helping that vision be, um, enhanced and understood and grown through dialogue, conversation and a lot of hard work. And, um, also I think our commission will give some legs to the other department. And, um, also I think our commission will give some legs to the other departments in terms of, um, like the initial question that brought us all together, there is grant money available to develop affordable housing along a transit zone. Well, what parcels are there? Who's doing that work? Is it, you know, like how, and, and it, we ended up with two grants and I think that probably comprised the first three or four years of our existence was, was just working to fulfill those grants and get to a point wherein two thousand, uh, twenty, we were able to have a town meeting to vote on the project. So, um, you know, that was like, I want to say four or five years actually. So it, it's a slow process, a lot slower than we'd like to manage it through a town government, but it is, it will, um, you know, I, the commission, I think will help provide some consistency and, uh, in message as well as support to developers who come into town and would like to purchase a property, um, and, and, and do some building, so.
And I just want to follow up on the, uh, four developers that, um, we heard from last week. We all have, we have contact information from them.
Yes.
And we're all gonna be out, making outreach to them to see if they'd like to come down to Guilford. A couple of them actually offered that, uh, they'd come into a community to see what was available to do it, so. And what they're most concerned about, these developers are, is the receptivity of a community for affordable housing. And that, that happens in a variety of ways, uh, from regulations to, uh, community and support and the whole, so. Um, there's one other thing I just want to mention before I, you know, ask if they're handing for it. Uh, the town owns a piece of property on Sawmill Road. It's an eleven-acre property, uh, just over the bridge on the left-hand side. Um, in two thousand twenty-three, we applied for and received, uh, a grant through Department of Housing, uh, Connecticut DOH and as well as the feds through the Community Development Block Grant Process. We have a, we have a commitment on a million dollars pre-development work, which would go a long way to help, uh, a developer, uh, who's interested in that, making that property, uh, an affordable housing, uh, property. So, um, at this point, we, you know, we still have some work to do to identify developers. Our fee process is probably gonna happen. We're working closely with Department of Housing on that, but, um, that is, that's another project that's in the works, so.
So, uh, I, just to piggyback on the, the costs, um, the pre-development costs are enormous. The purchase of the land, the assessment of the, of the land for its, uh, ability to sustain an any number, what number is that? And then, um, uh, what if you do want to continue to build there, the cost of actually building that system that will make that piece of property viable. And when we started looking at the very beginning, we looked at more than twenty properties. And when you're hearing, you know, acreage anywhere from smaller parcels, several, you know, a few acres to twenty, you know, you're talking about over a million dollars initially in just the cost of the land without having any sense of whether or not you can actually build on it. So we, so that is a big hurdle. And I think helping plan, identifying and plan for develop affordable housing and other kinds of housing where it can be afforded at, done at a reasonable cost or it, it is really a huge part of what, what needs to happen.
Great, thanks Chris. Uh, anyone else, uh, wishing to kind of answer a question?
Yeah, I just have one question, Marsha Meyer again. So as you said, it depends upon attitudes also within the community. And I'm sure one of the things that will come up is what will happen to our school system. My understanding is that our enrollment is down. Is that correct?
Enrollment is down over the last ten years, not to the degree that some of our Haters have, like in Madison.
Yeah, Madison also, right. So we really have.
We have capacity.
Capacity to bring people in and have our wonderful educational system.
And make it available to others.
Oh, make it available, yes.
Available themselves to it. That's a great point. Anyone else?
One, so Karen, my husband would, uh, is gonna ask me if I said this at the meeting, but I think, uh, so, uh, one thing that I think the community at large cares about is environmental sustainability. I hear things like sewers, right? But also like, we are such, um, a resourced and committed community to our environment. I, I, I would like to just sort of throw out there because Sean will ask me about solar panels or offsetting development with preserving and land trust, other acreage and, and making sure that we do care about the, the vision of the larger community by, you know, not just building, but also preserving land. And I'm sure, obviously, everybody in the room has already thought of that. And I can go home.
Now you can say you did. Anyone else? Going once, twice, sold three times. Uh, like to close the public hearing, uh, we'll be taking action on it a little later down the, uh, agenda. And, uh, certainly folks are welcome to stay for the very exciting Board of Suckman meeting that is sure to follow, the traditional follow, but, um, next up is, uh, public forum limited to, uh, three minutes on any other agenda items. Is there anyone wishing to address the board on any other agenda items?
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you very much for. Okay, uh, nothing in public forum. Let's move on to item four. That's approved minutes. Uh, first up would be four dot one, the February twenty, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting. Is there a motion?
Excuse me, Matt. Uh, just a question, uh, did we have to have a hearing on the, uh, uh, trust fund, Affordable Housing Trust Fund?
It's, it's listed as both.
I see, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, all right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any, uh, changes, suggestions, changes, etc.? Hearing none. Let me try your minds all in favor.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Item five, Police Chief Chris Massey. Uh, five dot one, discuss and take possible action on trade-in of forty Smith and Wesley M and P forty-five caliber sidearms to Amchar Wholesale. Good morning, Chief.
Morning. So this is part of our, uh, program to update our department issued sidearms. Uh, we recently completed the transition, so all of our officers are now currently purchased sidearms. And we are looking to create in the forty that we currently have, uh, in our inventory, um, to Amchar Wholesale, um, at a rate of two hundred and fifty dollars per sidearm for a total of ten thousand dollars. They would be cutting us a check and sending that back to us. Part of our initial process was we got trade-in values from each of the three vendors that we had initially, uh, got prices from. And Amchar came in at the highest traded value, so I'd like, uh, like permission to go sell those back and recoup that money.
Okay. Charles, you had at one point, uh, asked a question, uh, which I think bears repeating.
Yeah, I struggle with, I know that value trade. Uh, just getting the, the number of firearms in existence reduced, it's got some value in my mind, but I, I don't have the answer of how, uh, then just decide not to take the money and destroy it.
That would be, uh, respectfully up to the board of selectmen.
There's no restrictions in how they sell.
Uh, they, so we are selling them through a, uh, a, through this, to this company, um, and then at that end, they can, uh, sell them as they wish. We have no control over it. Once we sell it back.
Is this company, uh, recordable or, I mean, I, you know, give me an example of where a gun like this might end up.
I couldn't possibly speculatively ask to where they would end up.
So the, to me, I interpret that as anywhere.
Potentially, I'm not sure if this company only sells these back to other law enforcement agencies if they, I'm, I'm not sure what they do with them once we sell them back.
You had said that they don't have any restrictions, so.
And I will say it's, this is one of, out of, this is one of three vendors that, uh, Glock selects that can sell those particular firearms here in Connecticut. So I would imagine that there's a vetting process on the backend for that company.
Let me ask you this then, I mean, this is a recordable wholesaler, so they do have to go through all of the.
Their license, their federal firearms license.
So the gray area where they wholesale, the next wholesaler, the next wholesaler, then they disappear down the quarter.
And I don't know where they're gonna go from, once we sell them back to the, once we trade them in.
Other than, other than deciding not to take the money, I guess, there's no way. It just seems unfortunate that there are, it's in some way to restrict what can be.
How often, um, to do weapons, how long before you might be, be piercing, going to upgrade those weapons? How frequently does this happen, do you think?
Typically, it's about five to ten years when we're looking to either refurbish or, um, swap out our firearms. In this particular instance, uh, in the past, we remained with the, the same manufacturer and we were able to trade in to the manufacturer to have them issue out new ones. Again, the ones that we trade back in are, they're going to a manufacturer and they're, I have no control over where they go after that, other than, um, trading them back into someone who's a federally firearm licensed holder.
If you didn't do this and we, we just chose not to, how do we dispose of them?
Uh, we would complete paperwork with the state and bring them up to the state for destruction.
And again, we don't know what happens at that point.
Well, those, those get destroyed. I know what happens.
You do? Okay, good, good, right.
Uh, Chief, just, uh, the, the, we're buying weapons from this same vendor?
So we had already purchased, we had already purchased firearms from this vendor.
Okay.
And we've already paid for them. Um, now we've reached back out to them. This was their, this was their trade-in value that we can now send these to them. They will send us a check for the, for that balance, the ten thousand dollars.
So we've already to some degree, uh, deemed them to be a responsible vendor, uh, and wholesaler of firearms.
We did purchase firearms from them.
Well said.
She didn't see that tiger walk over there. Well, that's a toll, unfortunately.
So it's taping? I mean, we're not preventing, you were able to upgrade the weapons, so that's satisfied. So we really didn't want to vote on selling them today. It does not hold you back in any way. Go, were you planning on having that income back into your budget?
I was. Um, at the end of the day, that's, again, that's a board of selectmen decision. If you wanted to balance out my capital line.
Yeah.
And I can have them destroyed. That's not, um, but again, I have to be fiscally responsible. I have to present this to you. I can't sit on this or pick these items in our inventory. I'm, I'm, I see it as a requirement to present this to you.
Not question, not at all. I appreciate that. You know, this is strictly a philosophical question for me personally. You know, you just hear so much about.
What about table, you know, for a month? We could do, we could do a little research on this, or this organization, uh, Amchar Wholesale, um, to see if, you know, if they're popping up, uh, on news reports or.
Yeah, I, my biggest concern, I, I'm sure this is the mechanics of this industry or whatever, but that, you know, we're assuming that they're a responsible organization, but and I, and I don't know the pacts, I don't know this industry whatsoever, but, you know, they have to follow the rules, so they sell into the next wholesaler, the next, you know, and then all of a sudden, you know, these things are somewhere where they don't belong. And I know we have no control, and I wish there was some way to control this type of thing that they, uh, I mean, if the, if this company here sells them directly to a consumer, then all of the rules have to be followed in the qualifications.
Yeah, these aren't, these aren't firearms that are gonna go somewhere and be sold on the street. They're just, it's, this is through a vendor that is, holds them FFL. They're gonna be selling them through legal processes.
Right.
Just like we would be selling them to them.
When they go, each time it could possibly, could possibly go down the process of wholesaler, 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 uh, sometimes regulations in different states are diluted. That's my only point, you know? I, it, maybe I'm being cynical or whatever, but, you know, I, the only way in my mind that we know that these firearms are never gonna end up on the street is to destroy it, in my mind. That's what it comes down to. I mean, process, no matter how much we try to regulate something, you know, there are ways around regulations.
Sadie, did you wanna?
Uh, I would like to move to table this discussion.
Second, any further comments or questions? So we'll all do a little search. Yeah, uh, if there's any information you can provide us on this wholesaler, obviously you guys have done some vetting because you're, you're purchasing on them and, uh, have some, and have confidence in them, I'm assuming, uh, not putting words in your mouth, Chief. All right, uh, any further discussion? Try your minds on the favorite table.
Aye.
That motion carries. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, before we bring Pam up, uh, it's my motion to add an item to the agenda on six dot four, um, which would be moving forward with the lowest bidder for the subject project at Jacob Beach, which was tabled two weeks ago, uh, and is your motion to add this?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second, uh, comments or questions? Hearing none. Let me try your minds all in favor. Aye, that motion carries. Pam, come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you today?
Here with me on my twenty-sixth day. As I learn process.
There you go. Six dot one is discuss and take possible action on a musco lighting system forbidden.
Yes, we would like the Board of Suckman's approval for thirty-three thousand five hundred. We did, we do have the identical system, um, currently at Adams and the police courts. Um, this gives us a consistent set of lighting systems. We're able to control it from our phones. It would enable us not to have to give out passwords and codes for the lighting systems that we have now. And we feel that it'd just be really good.
When you say our phones, what do you mean?
Um, our park supervisor.
The parking director.
Park director, right.
It's not like you're gonna be additioning out the, the community.
We can then control turning them on, turning them off.
So somebody would call in and say, I need these lights. Can somebody help me out?
Yes.
And somebody from the office would do it.
They're permitted through our office, so we'll know when they're there. We know when we can turn them on and turn them off.
Cause the opposite was happening.
We have two, two locations.
Police Court and Adams.
The opposite was happening where people did know, kind of know how to override and turn it on and stuff.
There was a lot of lights on, nobody there, situation.
With this system, uh, that will hopefully prevent some of it.
We can also set it, so we'll know that if people go on in an hour, if no one's there. Um, and then if the lights are off, um, because there's no play, people can turn them on. And when there's no play, they'll, they'll turn off too.
So it's working well?
Oh, yeah.
Two locations.
Mm-hmm. I heard great things.
This was always a project near, dear, for me.
Yeah. And this is also, this is also coming out of our program account funding as well.
Oh, great.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
I'll move it.
Second. I could jump on all of them, but second, fine.
We don't need quotes for this.
Uh, we're, we're, we're considering this all source because it's consistent with the, uh, others that we have in place. So same software, same access methodology, so.
We, I know how you feel, but I think, I think in this situation, I, I agree that we don't, but I privately had conversations with Pam about quotes and things, so she understands, but I think in this situation, it makes sense.
To have one system for everything.
It's kind of like adding another component to something we already, and I think Rick did get quotes of that.
And they were astonishingly high.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I agree with that concept. We don't have any idea if this is thirty-three thousand, is there one for ten thousand? That's it's inconvenient to have two different systems. I recognize that, but if we don't get quotes, we don't know that, so.
We're gonna get quotes on the fireworks next.
Good.
I'm not on the parking record.
But according, I'm just, originally you did get quotes, Rick, right?
Yes.
And there were a lot.
Yeah. Okay, that's helpful.
All right, uh, so is there a motion? Do you have a motion and a second? Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Good job, good job, man. Uh, six dot two. Consider and take possible action on fireworks displayed for twenty twenty-four. Did we actually table this last month or?
Yes.
So is there a motion to take it off the table?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. All right, we went out and got some quotes.
We did. Um, and the three quotes ranged from fourteen thousand to twenty-five thousand. Um, I'm recommending that we stick with the eighteen thousand five hundred from Pyrotechnico. We understand that the lowest bidder. Has had some issues with their license, um, being suspended for an incident in Martha's Vineyard, so we would like to stay with Pyrotechnico. On these, no, but I do, I do know that the fire department, I had a meeting recently in the last, since I've been here. Um, and they, they've been happy with Pyrotechnico.
I know they've been happy with who we have. I, I meant to, uh. I meant to ask you to check with the fire department, just to make sure, but it sounds like you've already got some issues with the potentially a little bitter, so. I guess that gets close to answering my questions.
All right, uh, is there a motion to approve the award of fireworks contract?
Did we happen to go back to the original bidder and ask?
I'm sorry?
Wanted to match the little bit?
I did not, I did not, um. I certainly am, but I'm feeling that it's very re, I feel as if the low bidder is scrambling to get business and keeping it low.
But you might mention, you know, I can appreciate that, but I'm not gonna tell you how to. I might mention.
Yeah, and I, I also have, coming from, um, my previous job, we also use Pyrotechnico. Almost exact show with these shells and it's, uh, twenty-five thousand dollar show. So we're doing very well in my opinion. It's eighteen-five.
And we know that they don't have any issues with their license.
It moved, second? Uh, for the conference questions. Will you try your mind? All in favor? That motion carries. Okay, next up, uh, consider and take possible action on contract with Daco for bus transportation for summer twenty twenty-four.
Yes, so Taryn went out, got three quotes as usual. She did have, um, Peter Pan, who was not available, special transportation, um, had no air conditioned buses. And Daco came in with a fifty-six passenger this year, which would be very helpful because it'll allow us ten additional campers. Eighty in total for the summer, um, and they're coming in at thirty-nine thousand two hundred. Um, and I would request that the Board of Selectmen approve this. This is out of our program account and all takes care of itself.
The fees come in and then.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it, but how does this compare to last year?
I believe identical, except for the fact that Daco didn't have the motor coach available and they do this year.
So we're getting more seats for, for the same price.
And you always have, I mean, there'll probably be ten more campers that wanna come.
This program has been around since my kids were young. They do very well. I think quite honestly, most of the camps are already filled.
Need a motion?
You gotta move in a second? Let me try your minds. All in favor? Okay, next up, uh, six dot four, uh, consider and take possible action, um, to award. Uh, the project, septic project at Jacob's Beach, um, to Camerata Sanitation and Excavation.
So we're, uh, requesting approval for the lowest bidder, um, Camerata. We did get four bids. We, that were ranging anywhere from one hundred twenty-nine thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars all the way up to three hundred nine thousand. Uh, we had Winthrop, we had Lead with Ancon, but Camerata came in at one hundred twenty-nine thousand. Um, we did have, um, Michael Ott, um, look into Camerata and had phone. Conversation to review the requirements of the project with him. And he does not have any concern should the town staff choose to recommend the Camerata sanitation excavation.
Any feel for why that one, how layers there, they just didn't need the business or something?
You mean the highest bidder?
Yeah, I mean, it's double.
I know, I, I, I can't answer that.
What's the scope of this project?
Completely new septic.
Our goal is to get it done by April fifteen.
Significant expansion in capacity. They were pumping it once or twice a week.
And this is for the, the, sort of the. Beach building.
Rick was trying to get this done last year and it got held up, not by us, but.
It's right next to the.
And, um, so I'd just like to mention on this, uh, septic system, it's called a passive nitrogen system. And so the water pollution control, uh, there's only, this will be the fourth system that goes in in the state of Connecticut. So there's one in Old Saybrook, there's one in, uh, Westbrook, and then there's another one. So this will be the fourth one.
Camerata also did the one in Westbrook, I'm not sure.
Correct, Camerata, yep. So they did this one. But these passive nitrogen systems, what they do is they use a, a wood chip. Um, system and the leaching systems and, um, it's really good for the nitrogen. Because nitrogen is, is bad for the Long Island sound. It's like a fertilizer. And what happens is the invasive plants, they, they grow and.
Algae blooms.
Algae blooms, exactly, so, um. These, these systems are, it's a sustainable option. And I think it would be a really, you know, be like a showcase for.
What's, what's the projected life expectancy of this?
So just through some, uh, research with Sonia, uh, the wood chips, they mentioned seventy-five years for the chips. But, you know, but that's just on the wood, the wood chips, but, um, you know, a typical system is anywhere from twenty to thirty years.
And Sonia had some experience, I think she might have had experience in Westbrook, right?
She was the one who spearheaded the Westbrook.
She's been passionate about trying to get these type of systems as part of our general building, uh, considerations. Particularly given our proximity to Long Island Sound.
So it's, it's really important that, you know, throughout this project, we've talked about, you know. You know, once we do it here at Jacobs and other people, we can start talking about it, so we can see the success with it. There's gonna be tests, um. Areas where we can test the nitrogen level. I, I know, I think it's, it's gonna be really a, a great, great thing for Guilford.
As long as the high bidder didn't do the other three projects and knows something that nobody else knows, but I'm glad to hear that.
And the other thing too is, um. We will, we have been talking to the Standing Building Committee along the way. And so, so they've been up to date as far as what system we're putting in. We do have a meeting tomorrow night at seven o'clock. We're on the agenda. Um, and this is gonna be a quick turnaround.
Todd, thanks for mentioning that. The Chair, Standing Building Committee, David Mayo, who was inquiring why the town didn't take full advantage of the SBC on some of our capital projects. Uh, I think it's just tradition, um, the requirement that, um, SBC, uh, be involved in projects. Uh, is, uh, a result of the Board of Finance putting in some regulations that required any capital bonded projects. Uh, had to be, uh, managed through SBC, uh, or funneled through SBC. They'd be, they're the ones that do the, uh, the authorization of the invoices, that kind of thing. As well as provide industry expertise and suggestions, so, um. When I say the last, uh, last, last, what they had was at the library. Um, we had, uh, we were prepared to send, pay the last invoice, but we didn't have a holdback for. The work that obviously needs to take place on the front, on the, on the green, on the, the grass on the front. We didn't have a holdback. So it's some of those tricks and things that, uh, that would help, so, um, uh, this, that, that. The expectation is that this will go through, uh, Standing Building.
And our, our vote will be contingent on that approval as well, so.
All right, so is there a motion to approve? Any further comments? Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Thank you.
Relative to this project, if you and Sonia would make sure that the Sustainable Guilford Task Force is aware of what we're doing here. They're in, uh, they're in, will be preparing to, uh, file their application for gold status this year. This may well be something that gives them, uh, some, uh, additional points based on us taking this course of action.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item seven, uh, discuss and take possible action on proclamation recognizing Guilford's new poet laureate. Uh, is Gwen still on the line? The, uh, the Guilford Poets League has, um, asked that we, uh, name. Uh, Mark McGuire Schwartz as the new, as Guilford's new poet laureate. Uh, Gordy, uh, Whitman, who's been the poet laureate for a number of years, um, has tendered his resignation. So, um, it is, uh, it is the, um. Recommendation of the, the, the Poets Guild that, uh, Mark be named Guilford's new poet laureate. Uh, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Any comments or questions? Um, all right, let me try your minds, all in favor? The motion carries unanimously, as usual.
I think on Thursday, March fourteenth, there's gonna be a Guilford. Poets Guild program at the library to formally.
And, and, and recognize Gordy's. And I make, consider and take possible action on ordinances to establish an affordable housing commission and an affordable housing trust fund as a result of earlier public. Um, I think it was, I di, I didn't hear detractor. I think this, uh.
No, I, I know, I mean, this is, it's always people with questions and that's great and it was yet another opportunity to get some information out there today, this morning.
Right, and the, and the text does specifically mention that the role of the, uh, town planer.
Right.
Being executive and not voting.
The question came up of why a commission and, uh, I, you know, my understanding, it just. Quote unquote, gives this, uh, this subject that much more credibility and, and legal standing. Well, I, I think legal standing and budgetary standing and, uh, it's just a, to me, it's a natural growth. Uh, of, uh, our understanding of the issue in our community.
And acknowledges that this is permanent, really. I mean, we're not just trying to hit a certain number and then, oh, we're done, we're all set with that. It's not the case at all, it's, um.
It's a commitment.
It's a commitment. And, and, and advisory to this word, which is hugely valuable to me. Life is complicated, we don't know, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, uh, but may I make the motion?
Yes, you may.
Like to make the motion.
I, I, yeah, just, it's taken us, us, meaning the biggest sense, a society to get to this point. Where, you know, in this state, really, in particular, there's, some of the suburban towns have very little. I think we've always been at least aware of it and trying to address the needs. But I think, you know, it's gonna take, it's gonna take a long time to get, I think it's a long time to get out of it and a formal process is helpful. Toward keeping everybody paying attention to it. We know for certain, these folks will continue to push, and I hope we will as well, or whoever in these seats. Whatever future dates, so there you go.
Yeah, I have a couple of quick comments if I can. I think affordability, we have to keep that in line with our budget. Every year we have to keep pushing. Is that's not a formal part of this process, but that affects affordability for a lot of people in town. And, um, the other comment is, we, we talk a lot about the concept of workforce housing, being teachers and policemen and so on. Sometimes I'm afraid that we're doing that to placate people who might be concerned about this in our town. And I just wanna make it clear that there are plenty of people not in those categories that we need, that we need as part of the fabric of our community, as you said. There are disabled people, there are people who've made life choices where maybe they could be earning enough money to not be in this category. But they've chosen to do other things, like some of our speakers, and I just think it's really important that, um. You know, it's easy to say, oh, this is, this is so we can have policemen and teachers, and it's way beyond that.
Yes, you're right, so, I, I, that wasn't directed. Yeah, and some of, in some of the written things that we have, it does go into better example, not the, the bad examples, but, but a broader example is what you're saying. I did say a plumbing business, I don't know if you noticed. I did say that, but, um, you're, you're absolutely correct.
Well said. Forget the four-year college degree. Go into the trade.
You never know.
All right, um, so we've got a motion in a second, um, let me try your minds, all in favor? Thank you, I think this is an important step. All right, uh, item nine, appointments and resignations. Nine dot one, act on a recommendation to reappoint Gail Kattaskey to the Marina Commission. For a term to expire on November thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Is there a motion? In a second, uh, let me try your minds, all in favor? That motion carries. Um, item nine dot two, act on a recommendation to move Scott Williams from alternate to a regular member of the Conservation Commission. For a term to expire on February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-eight. Is there a motion? Second, uh, let me try your minds, all in favor? Aye, that motion carries. Uh, nine dot three, act on a recommendation to Daniel Soder from alternate to a regular member of the Conservation Commission. For a term to expire on February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-eight. Is there a motion? Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor? That motion carries. Act on a recommendation to appoint Candra Houston as an alternate to the Conservation Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire. On February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-six. Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Let me try your minds, all in favor? That motion carries. Uh, nine dot five, act on a recommendation to appoint Ben Robinson as an alternate to the Agricultural Commission. To fill a vacancy for a term to expire September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-six. Sandy?
So moved.
Second. Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor? That motion carries. I would like to, um. Table, uh, nine dot six, um, for the following reason, is that there is a little known, uh, codicil. That says you can't serve, uh, on, um, the pension committee and another board. Right, so he is already, uh, he's also, he's also elected official. So it's elected officials and other, other, um.
He's on the Board of Assessment Appeals.
Board of Assessment Appeals, so he is currently looking at changing that regulation on the pension committee and will have the wording available for us. For the, um, for our next meeting to change the ordinance, uh, change the language on the ordinance.
Yeah, I'd love to know what the, if anybody has interpretation of what the logic was.
Yeah, uh, I don't know, it's just, it's just a little, yeah, so is there a motion to table? Uh, let me try your minds, uh, all in favor?
I'd be interested to know the history of that, what the concerns were originally, not to make, because Brian is a dedicated guy. I'm sure he was fantastic, it's not a personal thing, but it is a systemic thing, which is what the heck was somebody thinking when they made that?
Yeah, what is there that we don't know?
Since the pension goes back to nineteen sixty-five, I'm not sure I'll be able to find out that, that, uh, specific information. My, my guesstimate here is the fact that there was probably a feeling about potential conflicts. Uh, and I'm not sure if all these positions were elected at the time back then. So what we've determined is that what you're gonna see next, next meeting will be a, um. Uh, a change to all three pension plans to make that, that change, to remove. The elected official part and appointed official part, with the exception of Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen and Board of Education. The thinking going that possibly back then, sixty-five, it was a feeling that those three boards would have some sort of conflict. Uh, by being on both those elected bodies and the pension committee. So that's what we're gonna bring up to you.
That's right, and that might have been the point. They might have used elected officials back then, is what he's saying, if I'm understanding your pitch. And that might have been a universe of elected officials. All right, thanks Mitch.
You're welcome. We'll see you next meeting with the, uh, with the changes, the, uh, proposed amendments to the pension comp, pension, uh, documents.
Um, all right, thank you Mitch. Uh, nine dot seven, act on a recommendation to appoint Scott. Uh, act on a recommendation to appoint Scott Graves as a regular to the Inland Wetlands Commission. Tracy, uh, before the meeting suggested that it was a, it was just a typo, it is, uh, as a regular member. Uh, to the commission, uh, for a term to expire on February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-eight. Uh, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try your minds, all in favor? That motion carries. All right, um, Charles? Do you wanna, you wanna invoke your one motion for all of them like you used to do?
Yeah, we got a little, okay, yeah, I forgot the wording, but it, uh, it's a request for use of town property. Uh, for all of them listed here, which, I'll just go through St. George Church, where's, uh. To use the green for their blessing, uh, Guilford Art League to use the green for a sign. Country School to place a sign on the green, the Ag Society to place a sign on the green. And also another sign for its farmer's market. Uh, Guilford Day to place a sign on the green. And the blue ribbons on the trees, uh, Conservation Commission to use the green, uh, for their Earth Day event. And the Keaton Society for a sign on the green. Is there a second? All the dates are listed.
I'll second it, but I have one question to follow, so I'll second it. The Ag Society, uh, request about their, um, um, seasonal farmers market. So the sign placement is five-two and every Tuesday or Wednesday throughout the season. Or the whole season, except during fair week. So. I think the weekly seasonal market is fine, I have nothing, nothing against it, but if we approve this, is that. Setting a precedent for other groups to be able to put the sign up. Usually you're putting a sign in a two-week period. So I don't know if, if we're opening a can of worms here, maybe not, I just.
Well, I think, yeah, the alternative would be that they came to us, you know, every week and asked for it. Would we deny it is, is the question. Um, but the, the, the question here is, it's going up and down, right? It's going up and down on Tuesday or Wednesday, so it's not a permanent sign throughout the summer.
Is it going up or down?
I guess that would be the condition.
Yeah, because I remember when, there didn't used to be rules for signs on the green, if you remember this, and then there was, uh, maybe. I don't know, within my lifetime, I guess, let's say fifteen years ago, there was a big change to limit the amount of time. Signs could be on the green to make them be a little more consistent, you know, blah, blah, blah. So. If we allow this, I'm just saying, we might be going back into, I don't know, may, maybe I'm making too much.
No, I'm not, but I see the Ag Society in a sense of, if there would be an exception for a group and in, in so many ways, their facility is. Functionally used as public space as well for so many events. Um, so if we were going to be inclined to, to stretch. An accommodation, it would be for a group like that.
We just have to say we look at it at a case-by-case basis.
That's right, I'll see.
Well, I'd be concerned that it is going up for days, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, and it's not staying up. That would be my.
Yeah, and, and I guess what we're approving here would be. Every Tuesday or Wednesday, so they would have to pick, it's not both, and then the other or was the whole season. Which, I, I'm, I'm fine, because they're, they're defining the season, it's May sixteenth to October twenty-fourth.
It says ideally would like to leave sign up for a whole season, except for during fair.
There's, there's a microscopic, I shouldn't say it that way, there's just like cost savings for them, I mean, there's a, there's a twenty-five dollar fee process, there's. Twenty-five dollar deposit. If, if, if they are able to, in fact, take it up and down, which it seems to be understanding of what's being proposed. I'm less, less offended as opposed to just putting something up and blocking everybody else out. From being able to use the space, because that's become a top of the greens busy. Yes, it is.
Do you allow suggestions from the crowd?
Uh, not at this point. You can have a, a, a public comment, which is coming up soon.
Okay.
Okay, uh. What's the sentiment? Well, stipulations, right? Why don't we do this, why don't we go on everything else, put that one aside, and then, and then.
I am concerned that it's five months versus two weeks. Concerned about that, but I, my concern would be alleviated if it was put up for a day or two. Each week.
We could split this up into maybe monthly uses or, or, you know, split, there's a couple different ways we could address that. It maybe meets everybody's needs. Okay, so, we are approving item five as, uh, either, either every Tuesday or Wednesday. Throughout the season, and the season being May sixteenth, October twenty-fourth. Right?
Right, not the award.
Okay, I can live with that. Make that as an amendment to the initial motion. There you go. And the second.
Let me get away with one easy motion.
Along those lines, I also wanted to bring up the, um, the purple ribbons. Which I think is wonderful, but it's, it's here as an, um, application to place a sign, and it's really, it's really.
It's interesting you say that, purple ribbon signs.
And they're not just in that one spot, we have a spot for the signs, so if someone is in the sign process to do something else on the green. And, um, I, I'm embarrassed to bring this up without being able to recall the specifics, but at one point there was something that I felt was advertising. It was a recognition, a sponsorship, there was something they had at one point that I didn't feel was appropriate for the greens, so. They have time, maybe, if we, we feel that this is really a request for the use of the green instead of the sign. We wouldn't be holding them up if we took another look at this.
When do they, they used to put the flags up.
That's still gonna happen, that still happens in, was it May?
No, here it is, the, this purple ribbon.
Purple ribbons on trees is different, purple ribbons on trees is different than the flags.
Oh, well, trees, that brings up all the. Okay, yeah.
And, and the purple ribbons are consistent with their overall theme, and this is, as part of the advertising presentation. Alright, um, so, uh, so you wanna amend the motion again? Except number six, until we have an opportunity. Except, you're, you're taking out of the, the raw motion, I would, I would further amend to, uh, take. Item six out until we get some further clarification. Second? Uh, on the amendment, let me try your minds, all in favor? On the original motion, which has been, which is somewhat, somewhat unlike whatever originally said. Is there a motion? Charles already had it.
I am in favor.
All in favor? Charles, I hear I was trying to throw you a bone, I didn't like doing that. No good deed goes unpunished. Alright, committee reports?
I would just like to mention that the, um, Ad hoc Program Committee, that is, I represent the Board of Selectmen on it. And it's with the, the members of the Park and Rec Commission, the Park and Rec Director and, and, and staff and, um. MJ, uh, representing the financial aspect of the town as the Town Finance Director. We've had several meetings and this was a. Follow-up and it's a very productive, excellent meeting about the use of the, of the program funds and, um. There'll be more to come, but it's, it's in the vein of what we've been thinking about over the last, I would say, year. So I, there's some excellent things, but I'm gonna, Pam and the commission would like to present it to this group rather than me. Because they know what they're talking about, and I'm not gonna say I don't, but I mean, they should do it, they should get the credit for how they're handling. Is there anything else you want to?
Yeah, I'll just add that they've, um, come up with projects, um, initially, uh, to do at least, even before the. Summer season starts, um, to, to get that ball motion and I think, um, under Pam's leadership that we're gonna see. Uh, a lot more to come, um, and a better understanding and better use of how that program fund is managed.
Thank you. Thanks for your work on it. It's a good outcome from our discussions of budget, of budget deliberation. Alright, thanks MJ. You need her? MJ? Could you come back, please?
We didn't get out that fast.
I was just wondering if we had any response to that question about the, uh, septic trust fund.
Oh, MJ, MJ's, uh, sent out an email to some of us that she is, uh, um. It's something that has been on her to-do list, she just hasn't had a chance to focus on it, uh, given the budget season, we can certainly understand that.
Yeah, and it's really, um, it's more than just a financial question. It's, uh, ordinance and, uh, you know, legal question as, as to how we're doing that as well, and I know. Like I said in my email, that Sonia has brought up concerns that, that were addressed when, um, when the woman came to spoke. I forget her name, but she had mentioned those same concerns that Sonia had, so I think it's, um, a larger question than just. How we put the money in the bank.
We're still exploring it.
Yeah, absolutely, we, we, yep, we'll be putting that.
It is a legitimate concern, part of the, the bondholders or wherever they were, they were bondholders at one point. The assumption being that, uh, if the original allotment, uh, that was set aside was appropriate to replace the system or. A portion of the system, uh, growing that, uh, over time to keep pace with inflation. So that if there isn't, uh, uh, a system failure, that there'd be enough money there.
That's where I was coming from, I mean, I was concerned that there would be funds for different organizations to cover the cost of things. And those costs just keep going up, but yet, you know, investments, we all, you know, struggle with weird how to invest. For success and, uh, you know, so obviously it is a bigger question, but we're on it, right?
Yeah, and it's a game between making sure it's liquid enough if something happens and, and doing that, so again, it's not. Just a discussion in the finance world, it's, it, it has to include Sonia and, and her ordinances and, and. I know she's working hard to update some of those, um, ordinances for her.
At the end of the day, it's protecting the taxpayers in town because with, if there's a catastrophic failure, they have the ones, the funds to do it. The town is gonna be on the hook for fixing it, or, well, not necessarily fixing it, but. We would then need to shut down that, uh, facility, and once you shut it down for health reasons, we pay for the cost of relocating those people, housing those people.
Oh, and that's why I was surprised that, you know, you can't be the only community facing this issue.
Listen. You listen?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, we'll reach out to other communities to see what they're doing, so.
GFOA, listen.
As long as we're not, um, you know, sacrificing the orig, one of the original questions and because we know there's a bigger issue about, wasn't one of the original points? That the money is sitting somewhere where it's not earning anything and. Yeah, can we just address, is there a way to just address that? Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's no, there's no way that we can just.
And the financial institution that, uh, is, is down on the corner, is, I'm sure they'd be willing to work with us.
Oh, absolutely, maybe I can look into, uh, like a money market account in, in the meantime as opposed to just, um, saving savings.
Great, thanks MJ.
Thanks, Charles.
Anything else? No business. Public forum, sir?
Oh, okay.
Name and address for the record.
My name's Peter Colburn, I live at fifty-seven Meadow Hills Drive in Guilford. Um, just, I just wanted to offer as an impartial observer, related to the discussion about the signs for the, um. Farmer's market, that, um, maybe you might wanna consider. Having them, having the agricultural, and I'm not associated with them in any way.
Disclaimer.
Yeah, so, um, maybe offer them the opportunity to pay. A higher fee, but something less than what they would do if they were paying every week, so you're not setting a precedent. That, uh, somebody can leave a sign up all the time. And, uh, just another point, I know that the Guilford Green is a central point for you every day. Because I buy it every day, but, you know, if you're someone like me that spent my life. Driving someplace else five days a week, I would only get to the green on maybe Saturday or Sunday. People aren't generally gonna see a sign on Tuesday and Wednesday, and, uh, so. I think it's a nice opportunity to support them and to give them a chance to do something without. A precedent that makes it too easy for somebody else to do it, that you could do something like that and have some kind of. Thing to fee that we'd be discounted from the, you know, twenty-five dollars every two weeks or something like that, but still. Give them a chance to have a, a sign out there.
Thank you, thank you for those comments, and you're absolutely right about the, the green-centric nature of, uh, some of our thinking. My, a guy I worked with back in the day at the phone company, worked together for, uh, ten years, he lived in Guilford, I lived in Guilford, we never saw each other in town. Because he lived, he lived, uh, on Hoopole Road North, uh, and just never came downtown, so. Absolutely right. Thank you for that. Anybody else, uh, uh, in public forum, wishing to address the board in public forum? Hearing none, let's, uh, move on to item sixteen, um, which would be discuss to take possible action on appeals from residents. Um, regarding the, uh, elderly tax relief program, an executive session will be required. Um, so, uh, is there a motion to go into an executive session? Alright, let me try your minds, uh, when, first off, we're gonna invite, uh, at least one of the, uh, the applicants who's here today. We think we know who he is, uh. And Eber as well, not just him, not just former celebrity. Uh, so, uh, let me try your minds, all in favor? Okay, uh, is there a motion about an executive session?
Second.
First and second, uh, let me try your minds, all in favor? An executive session, there are no motions made, no actions taken, uh, but I think it may be worth, uh, just suggesting. Uh, not suggesting, but just mentioning that there's some correspondence that we all received over the weekend. Uh, which did not make it onto the agenda, uh, and that was related to the App Foundation. And petitions that had been submitted, um, it was, uh, the timing on such was that we, we did not have it in time and validated. Uh, in order to include it on the agenda, uh, but even, even so, had it been, uh, submitted in timely fashion. We would have, uh, would most likely not have had it on the agenda because we, it, I've already forwarded it to town council. For appropriateness of, uh, what is being asked for, so. Um, but if, and that will, uh, Pete will be looking at that relatively shortly.
Yeah, with regard to the petition request, I'd be particularly interested in what the mechanism would be. For the petition with, that's been requested, it's just I don't get it, so, input from Pete would be great.
Important thing is it's being acted on already, I just came in over the weekend.
Town council has already started looking at it.
Yeah, it's not, no one's being disrespected, it's not being ignored, it's being acted on. Yes.
Yes.
Alright, good. Anything further, put in the order?
We don't have to mention every table, just stuff that we have to take.
We didn't, David, we're just not taking any action at this point. Um, which is what we would do, the only action we take would be to grant. Uh, I'll let, any motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? That motion carries. Alright, leave.